Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my PowerPoint. Hey. Can you let me know if you see it, please?
It is loading. Yep, there we are, there we are.
Perfect. Okay. Do you see a little recording thing on your screen?
I do.
Good, perfect. Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and go over the final exam review for CIT two forty seven. You might want to be a little patient, y'all. That's for you and who I'm recording for. This might be a little slow. My computer unfortunately is not working very well today. Oh, boy. Anyway. So here's an exam or overview of the exam. So this final exam consists of a traditional canvases exam with two hands on GNS labs. So it'd be pretty similar to test two in that manner. So it'll just be like a test, which will have forty seven questions. Then you have two. Oh, thank you. So the final exam will be a test, a forty seven question test, and then two hands on GNS labs. I should note that the content of this exam is comprehensive. So it'll go over everything we've learned about the semester. Here are the type of questions you'll see in exam. There'll be two matching questions, one for ACL and one for general network terminology. You can find that same question in one of your quizzes and maybe even like test one, I think. There'll also be, actually, I think there's just one short answer question. I'll need to look. Let me think about that. Yeah, I think it's just one. But I'm gonna put one or two. It won't be that many and one, though, I think is actually kind of a repeat last one concerning routers. It's a little tip there. There'll also be some multiple choice questions and then there'll be a number of fill in the blank questions. Nearly all of these will be for subnetting. So let's see here. So here are the topics that will be covered in the final exam. There'll be ACLs, standard VLSM fees, at least not for the quiz part. You just need to know difference between standard and extended ACLs. Subnetting and IP addressing will be very, very much a focus of this exam. So there'll be some ID, you'll need to know how to figure out some IDs or some people call them some of the addresses. You need to figure out, need to know how to calculate broadcast addresses. You need to know how to convert between cider masks and write down DD or dot decimal notation equivalent. You need to do maximum minimum hosts. There'll also be some VLSM questions. There'll be wildcard mask conversions and finally I private IP address ranges. Also MAC addresses and ORP. So basically those questions where you trace the packet through a LAN, there'll be at least one question like that in the final. Route types and configuration. So there'll be questions on routers like how routes are populated on routing table. There'll also be short answer question will also deal with routes and routing also VLSM. So that's keep in mind. Also, you'll be tested on your general network vocabulary, broadcast domains. DHCP will also be a part of the exam as will router troubleshooting. Which is basically also the short answer question. IPv6 address abbreviation. So you don't need to know the IPv6 address types. You just need to know the abbreviations. There are finally STP will be the last part of the question exam. You need to be able to identify root ports, designated ports and block ports. So actually, let me add something else. Roots. Switch identification. Okay. You also need to figure out, so basically you have three questions with STP. You need to figure out which ports are which in the configuration you're given. Obviously, you need to start by find the root switch and then going from there. And I will go over, I will cover STP extensively in this, can be some study guide. Here is how I would recommend you all prepare for the exam. First, I would say go through all the quizzes and exams to review questions and answers. Please note that some will reappear in the final. Now, I want to note that I've opened up all the quizzes and the exams. You'll still need to review the exams through lockdown. Test one and test two in particular will be, well, actually, test one and all your quizzes in particular. Test two was original and there's no OSPF in this exam. So test two will not be as important. There could be some submitting stuff in there would be good to review, though. But as far as question per question stuff that will be reused for the exam, test one and all the quizzes will be a great place to start. Please be sure to study your sub studying. That'll be a very heavy component of the exam. Their practice quizzes and the network design quizzes. The last, now, if you go to Canvas, there's a subnet and network design quiz. I have opened it and given you infinite attempts on it. So I highly recommend that you review that. It should be like the last module of things like module fifteen, that subnet and network design quiz. It's open, it's, it's gonna be completely open and you have infinite retakes. It'll keep your high score, so it won't affect your grade. But please study that exam as much as possible. I think it will help you out a lot. And finally, this PowerPoint, you should use it to narrow down and narrow down key to aspects. You can use it to narrow down the key aspects of the exam and also use it to identify any topics you're struggling with. This PowerPoint contains the basic components of everything you need to pass more or less. Honestly, if you just studied this thing, you probably do pretty well. But I would say go over the quizzes and go over topics you're struggling with. I will tell you, I don't cover absolutely everything on here. It'll be up to you to review quizzes and exams and also previous PowerPoints I've made lectures to prepare for certain topics you're not as comfortable with. Now, the GNS portion, I will say this, the first part is routers. It is a comprehensive router part, a router test. So you'll need to be able to configure that and DHCP. You'll need to be able to configure OSPF and ACLs. And there's a few other things you'll need to know how to do, but that's the gist of that. Then there's a switch. Then there's a switch GNS assignment for the final. It will go over ACL or the sorry, not ACLs, but it'll go over STP trunking and VLANs and basic configure eight or basic changes like changing host names and adding is the adding SSH or TLS communication like you did, that basically the stuff you did at the beginning of the semester. But to prepare for these little, these assignments, I'd say read through the instructions carefully, make sure you complete them all. My command guides will be very crucial for this part. Honestly, if you just use my command guys, you could probably get through these pretty quickly. Please make sure to save. If you don't save, unfortunately, I will have the mark down points. Please make sure you save everything. And finally, I recommend downloading your lab and testing configurations after you submit it to make everything, make sure everything works. So in other words, after you submit the lab, please download it, open it up in GNS, make sure everything is working. And if it's not, if you might, with DHCP, your PCs, you'll need to run the DHCP command on both of them again to make sure they get their address. But other than that. Yeah, please make sure everything works before, and if it doesn't change it and you can resubmit as many times you need. So now we're gonna go ahead and get into the content of the exam, like what's gonna be in it. So let's talk about collision domains. So a collision domain is the set of devices whose frames can collide with one another. Now, this is gonna be important for the exam. Bridges, switches and routers are all devices that separate networks into collision domains. Did I cut out Connor?
Nope.
Okay. So bridges, switches and routers separate networks into multiple collision domains. This is important. Hubs do not, if you look at the topology here, this is a hub, though, to tell, notice how the circle is all around it. So if anything was connected, connected to this hub, which two things are, all this is in the same collision domain. Now notice on each, how on each interface on a router and a switch and a bridge, there's a different collision domain represented by these circles. So this is, this is, this is true because switches, routers and bridges all divide networks into multiple collision domains. Now, there's something called broadcast domains that's separate from collision domains. So broadcast domain is the set of devices for which, when one device sends a broadcast, all devices receive the broadcast. Routers only, routers are the only device that separate networks into broadcast means only routers. Now, there is technically an exception for switches with VLANs, but we're not talking about VLANs. We're just talking about the devices as they are. So keep that in mind for the exam. It's only routers that could separate devices to multiple broadcast means. Your cabling types. Go over your basic cable, so rollover cable connect, that's basically used to connect to a console. So in other words, if you're an administrator, you have a PC, you'd use a rollover cable to connect to a switch and then you could open up a terminal to make configurations. Then you have a crossover cable. It connects a switch to a hub and the finally straight through cables connect routers to a switch or a computer. So that's some basic, that's some basic terminology right there. Also, there's the memory types you want to make sure you know for the terminology question. There's RAM, which is working storage is the working storage memory. It includes the active running configuration file. There's ROM with stored the boot program that finds a Cisco iOS image and loads it into RAM. There's flash memory that stores the iOS image and other files and finally NVRAM. This stores the startup configuration. It's not the active running configuration. It's the startup configuration file that's used when the switch is booted. There's probably other than these, there's gonna be some more terminology you need to know. Again, I think it's either module one or two quiz or test one that contain the may be big matching question for all the terminology. Review that and make sure you get all the answers correct or make sure you look at the correct answers if you got it wrong. And you should be good for that part of the exam. Let's talk about switches. So here's some things you need to know about switches for the exam. You need to know how they learn MAC addresses. So there's a four step process in this. You won't, we need to recite this like in test two or the midterm. You will not need to recite these, but it's important to understand how this works because of problems that look like this. You have one of these problems again, which you can review test one or the quizzes that have them to get good with them for the exam. But anyway, so switches their MAC addresses by first receiving a frame of port. They retrieve the source MAC address from the Ethernet header of the frame. They search the other address table for MAC address, the MAC address. If it is found, or I'm sorry, if it is not found, it adds that MAC address and port pair to the table. So there's another process which is used with MAC addresses is called forwarding frames. So switches receive for a frame on a switch receives a frame of the port. It extracts the destination MAC address from the Ethernet header. It looks up the destination MAC address in, in the internal address and it's the internal, internal address table. It forwards the frame to a support specified in table unless that port is the same port on which the frame is retrieved. I'm sorry, received. However, if no entry exists in the table for the MAC address that it received, it forward that frame out all interfaces except the port it originated from. So it's basically broadcasting it. So tracing or frames. Make sure you know how to trace frames across this LAN. You'll have this picture in your exam and know how communication between the computer, between these computers affects the switch. Sorry about that, affects the switches MAC address table. So questions to consider, what two addresses that are, what are the two addresses that are contained in network layer or layer two frame? So for this, there are two base, there are basically two addresses for my layer two. There's the source MAC address and the destination MAC address. So what layer two address to the switch saved to its MAC address table? That would be the source. So basically this PC, if it's sending the frame to like host D, host D sends the frame to the switch. The switch takes that source MAC address, then it adds it to his table with this port FA one. That's how a switch learns MAC addresses. So it's the source MAC addresses that will be important for this question. So what happens to the MAC address table when a broadcast frame is sent from the computer? Basically. Basically, all that happens is that the switch, when it learns a new frame, but it doesn't know or it, when it receives the frame, if it doesn't know the source MAC address, it'll add it to its table. The destination MAC address basically to broadcast it to all the computers. Then those computers will send those desk, those frames back to the source computer, which is A or the one that, sorry, the one that actually owns the MAC address. It will send that communication back to the switch. It will learn that MAC address and then the host A will receive that packet back or I'm sorry, frame back. Sources of routes. So there are three major types of routes. This will be very important for the exam, by the way. Connected, you need to know how connected routes are created. They're created when it adjacent router interface, excuse me, when they're created when two two adjacent router interfaces have IP addresses configured and have the no shutdown command configured. So two things, remember IP address configured, no shutdown command. Static routes are created manually, manually by the administrator. We'll be getting to that in a minute. Routing protocols are created automatically after administrator sets up a routing protocol on the router. Example of these, examples of these include OSPF, RIP and EIGRP. Routing protocols will not be part of the exam, no OSPF. You don't need to worry about that. Okay, creating static routes. So with the diagram above, let us say we want to create a route to router one that can get to the one ninety two, the one sixty, the one dot zero. So it's twenty four seven or two. So we, we're here on router one. We want to make a route that'll help, like say there's a PC behind here. I want to get a route that will help router to be able to forward router ones frame or packet to PC one. So to create the static route, we use the command IP route. This, we first have the destination subnet ID, so the mask, then the IP address to the next hot port or the exit interface on the router reconfiguring. So the first step here, destination subnet ID is the sub that you want to route to. In this diagram, it is one ninety two, the one sixty, the one dot zero. So it's over here. The subnet mass corresponds to destination subnet ID. In this case, it would, case, it would be what the slash twenty four or two fifty five, the two fifty five, the two fifty five dot zero. The final argument can either be the IP address on the other routers, the JSON interface, which would be one ninety two, the one sixty, that zero dot two. Since this interface here is connected to router one, which you're, we were configuring this route on. Or we can use the source routers exit interface for the route, which would be S zero slash zero, which you do right here since it connects the router to. So these are the commands, one, we could write one of these two commands. So IP route, one ninety two, the one sixty, that one dot zero, three seventy five is followed by zero and then one ninety two, the one sixty eight, the zero dot two, which is this address here, next top IP address on the router that leads to the sub that we're routing to. We can write that same command out except using this interface here on the router that leads to the router that can lead to this subnet. Speaking of subsets, let's go over some subnetting stuff. I'd say this table here is gonna be very important. I created this to help you quickly, quickly study stuff. But anyway, I will warn you, much of the exam, I would say roughly half is subnetting and VLSM questions. If you need a deeper review, you can check out my no credit submitting practice module for practice questions. One video that I made and also PowerPoint presentation. Now I've included some of those, the slides in this thing here. But if you wanted, if we want a demonstration in the video format, I recommend going to that module. Anyway, I recommend studying the quizzes there anyway.
I've cut out.
Oh, sorry. So anyway, if you need a review of subnetting, there's the no credit submitting practice module. You'll find practice questions that you can take infinitely. You'll find a video that I created and also PowerPoint presentation I created. I have included some of the slides in this PowerPoint presentation to help you or for convenience. But still, I recommend visiting this module anyway, because I have a video there that goes in depth on this stuff. And also, this practice questions are really helpful. Also, you can use the table below for memorizing magic numbers, dot decimal notation mask and also cider masks. This will be important for converting from cider mask to dot decimal masks. And also for creating or figuring out some IDs and broadcast domains, not the mention, figure out VLSM questions. Oh, excuse me, you pass, catch my breath here. But anyway, so in this table here, I have the center masks per class. So there's a class A center mask, class B and then class C. And also you'll note that the magic number is the same between all three masks. Or I'm sorry, classes. So note here that the first non, non-classful mask, which is a highlighting green here has a magic number of one twenty eight. The magic number goes in a pattern with alongside these masks. So for every mask, for every increment you add to the mask, like from slash seventeen to slash eighteen, basically the magic number will be half of what the other one is. So for example, slash seventeen has a magic number of one twenty eight. Then slash already twenty eight has a magic number of sixty four. And then it keeps going on until slash fifteen or slash thirty, which is four. And then slash fifteen, this last twenty three would have two, magic number of two. You will not see any masks below slash thirty in your exam. So I'm gonna quickly go over the magic number method for anyone who's still wants it. I will mention, if you're good with the binary method, unfortunately, I don't teach it since I'm not very good at it. But if anyone uses binary, you don't, you don't need to use this if you don't want to. You don't need to use the magic number method, but anyway. I will say, using the magic number method is really important because it is a lot quicker than binary unless you really, really good with binary. And it's also very, very helpful for VLSM. That's why I highly recommend the magic number method. So the magic number method is beneficial because it avoids the binary math altogether. It requires simple math is basically this multiplication and addition and subtraction. It requires you to find patterns that determine which octets remain the same and which one needs to be calculated. So in other words, instead of using binary, where you need to calculate pretty much all the sub, the octets using the magic number method, you only need to perform a calculation on just one octave. There's a total of six steps. I'm not gonna read them here because I already go over them in my demonstration. But if you want to look at those later, you can. But anyway, we're gonna demonstrate them here. So we're gonna, I'm going to demonstrate the magic number method with an example. So the magic number method could be used to find some ID given a random IP address. So for first example, we have a problem where it defines the subnet ID of ten, that seventy seven, that fifty five, that three slash thirteen. So our first step is to examine the cider prefix, format the normal octets and find the interesting octave. So for the octets of the subnet mask, that two fifty five, so you do, oh, sorry. So basically, the first thing you want to do when you are solving for some ID, you want to take the cider mask and you want to convert it to dot decimal notation. That's why this table is very, very important here. This also goes in a pattern too. So it goes to one twenty eight, one ninety two, two twenty four, two forty, two forty eight, two fifty four and two forty, two fifty four. Honestly, what I recommend for the exam is learning how to write down these numbers. Honestly, writing down the number patterns like one twenty eight, one ninety two, two twenty four, two forty, two forty eight, two fifty two, two fifty four. Writing down the interesting octave numbers for the dot decimal notation format is very important. Also, writing down the magic numbers really helps with the exam. That's what I did. You'll be provided a scrap piece of paper for your exam or you'll be allowed to use when I need. So when the exam starts, you can actually just quickly jot that stuff down. And that can help you for the exam. But anyway, our first step in solving this problem here is take this cider notation mask for the dot decimal. So that'd be two fifty five, that two forty eight, that zero dot zero. So next step would be to take the IP address that we're given and line it up with the subnet mask. So when you have a two fifty five in your subnet mask, the IP address or the octet and the IP address because it just carries over. So if you have a two fifty five and it lines up with an octet IP address, that number basically carries over to your subnet ID. So basically, you would write this that these down on paper as you're working on them. When there's a zero in the subnet mask, these octets become zero in the subnet ID. The number that is not two fifty five or zero in your subnet mask, the octave that does not have a two fifty five or zero number is your interesting octave and that's the number we need to solve for. So for this step, we use a special formula that employs simple subtraction to find what is known as the magic number. To find it, take the dot decimal value and dot decimal notation value from the subnet mask and trying to octave and subtract it from two fifty six. So our number is two forty eight. We subtract it from two fifty six and we get eight. So what we do with that eight is when we then, we then multiply with it, we multiply it by itself. And we need to find a multiple of the number that either matches or exceeds the number in an interesting octave in the IP address. So in this case, that would be seventy seven. And we got the magic number of eight. So we need to multiply eight by itself a few times. So or not by itself, but I mean eight times one, eight times two, eight times three and so forth until we find a number that fits. Until we find a number that's the closest to seventy seven, but does not exceed it. So you want to find a number that either equals or is close to the interesting octave number, but you do not want to exceed it. The reason is that because at that point, this IP address would not be in the subnet. But anyway, so eight times nine is seventy two. That is the correct answer because eight times eight is sixty four. That's too small because there's a number closer to seventy seven. That's a multiple of eight. Eight times ten is too big because eighty is greater than seventy seven. So what we do now is we take seventy two, we add it to the interesting octave and then we have our subnet ID. So it's ten, that's seventy two, that's zero to zero. Hey Connor, does this all make sense?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. Do you use the magic number method?
I am bad with submitting, I will be honest.
Uh-oh. Hopefully, this review will help you get used to it. I would say that the best thing you could do, like I was saying, is going through those quizzes. They really help out. That's why I took it like fifty times when I took this class. So if practice makes perfect, then I would say definitely with subnetting, it's very important. Something will be a very crucial part of this exam, I will warn you.
Yeah, I've been trying to.
Okay. If you need more help with me, I can help you if you need it.
It's fine, I'm good.
Okay. So our second demonstration is going to be finding a broadcast address. We're gonna use, be using the same IP address to demonstrate how this is different from finding a subnet ID. So basically, many of the steps carry over, but there's one additional step to finding the broadcast address. So when you're finding this address, the broadcast address, you're basically solving for the subnet ID, but you're doing a little bit extra. You're doing one extra step. So many of the same steps apply, but there, one is done a little differently and that's the first step. So two fifty five, when that's in your subnet mask, after you convert it from the cider notation, that number still carries over. However, when you see a zero in your subnet mask octets, those octets in the IP address actually become two fifty five. They aren't, they're not zero, but the two fifty five. That's because the broadcast address is the very last address in a subnet range. So two fifty five, that two fifty five is the very last number in a subnet. Interesting octave stuff still applies. So two forty eight is not two fifty five or zero. So it is the interesting octave we need to solve for. Magic number methods still stay the same. You take the interesting octave, subtract it from two fifty six and you got your magic number. Same method, finding the multiple, which we figured out with seventy two. So ten, that's seventy two, that zero to zero is our, is our subnet ID. But to find the broadcast address, we do one more thing. We find, to find the broadcast address, we add the magic number to the subnet ID's interesting octave value and subtract one. So that would be seventy two, seventy two plus eight minus one equals ninety seven. So right here, if you look, that's our answer. So ten, that's seventy nine, that two fifty five, the two fifty five is a broadcast address. So basically, as I said, it's pretty much the same thing as finding the subnet ID. All you do is just add the magic number one more time and then subtract from one. And then you add that to your interesting octave and that's your broadcast address. Maximum minimum hosts. Finding cider mask for maximum subnet slash hosts. I know a lot of students struggle with this problem. I will admit, it's kind of confusing. But yeah, I'm gonna be going over this part for you all. But anyway. The reason we do this is that we want to find the subnet that provide a network, the maximum number of subsets or hosts. So basically, when you're plotting a network, if you have, when you're plotting on a network or an IP subnetting design, you want to make sure that the subsets you give certain networks will accommodate the number of computers that are gonna be in it. It's really hard to change the design after you implement it. So if you're, if you have a network that's gonna have a lot of like subsets, then you want to maximize the number of subsets. If you're gonna have, your network's gonna have a lot of hosts or device, host devices, then you want to maximize number of hosts. The way you do that is that you find a subnet mask that supports, that basically finds the smallest mask that can support the required number of hosts or subsets. So basically, in other words, if you want to maximize subsets with a mask, you want to find a mask that will provide support for the, that will support the required number of hosts. Basically, it's minimize, it's finding the number of minimal, finding the mask that supports the minimum number of hosts required for the problem. So this, this process will give a shortcut for that. So there's three steps. You need to examine the values you're given, calculate the required subset or host bits for each value and then calculate the two subset mask and cider notation to respectively provide that respectively provide the maximum number of subsets, the maximum number of hosts. So it would be, you'll be given prompt submitted, you've already received even some quizzes and stuff. On the difference here, similar to the example, you'll only be asked to find one. You need to need to maximize subsets or maximize hosts, not both. But this problem does both to demonstrate how to do them. So our problem is to find the mask, the masks that each give the maximum subnet and host bits for the following requirements. Excuse me. So we're given the subnet. We, we need fifteen subsets. We need a mask that'll provide fifty subsets and we need a mask to support six hosts. For problems like this, you'll be asked to find a mask that would maximize the number of subsets or maximize the number of hosts. If you need to maximize subsets, you need to find the required number of host bits using the number of needed hosts in example. So that's six. Conversely, if you need to maximize hosting, you need to find the required number of subset bits using the number of needed subsets. An example, which is fifteen here. So our second step is actually evaluating the or examining the values we're given. We need to calculate the required subsets or subset or host bits for each value. So for maximizing subset bits, we need to find the needed number of host bits. The formula we can use for this is hosts equals two to the power of H minus two, where H equals host bits. So we subtract two because in all subsets, the first and the last addresses are unusable on hosts. So basically, that's because it's the subnet ID and then the broadcast address. You can't assign those to an add, a host. So with this formula, find the closest number that matches or exceeds the number of needed hosts. For this example, we need six hosts. So six. So we have six is greater or less than two to the power of H minus two. So anyway, three, so the power two to the power three works because eight minus two equals six. If we did two to the power of two, that would only give us four. That does not support six hosts. On the other hand, two to the power three, we subtract that from two or subtract two from it, you get six, which equals the number of hosts we need. So the number you take away from this is three. You want to take away the multiple, so your H here is your multiple. That's the number we're gonna use for our calculation for the mask. When you're maximizing host bits, you need to find the needed subset bits. And that's just two to the power of S. So you need to find the power of two that will either match or exceed fifteen. It needs to be the closest number to fifteen that can match or exceed it. So two to the power of three is eight, that's obviously not big enough. So two to the power of four sixteen, which is because it's, it's closest, it's the closest number to fifteen without the It's closest, it's the closest number to fifteen without the, uh, without, or it's the closest number of fifteen. Without being too big. Um, it also, yeah, it meets the requirements. So four is the number we take away from this. So when you're solving this. You take away the multiple of two that you use to solve, where you use to find a number that either equals or exceeds uh, the required number of hosts or subsets. So finally, calculate the two subnet masks and cider notation that represent, that respectively provide the maximum number of subsets, maximum number of hosts. I will warn you, you need to write these answers down in cider notation. When you receive these prompts, please write them down in cider notation. So find the subset mask and provide the maximum subsets. Use the formula thirty-two minus H, where H equals the required host bits. So if you look back here, three was our answer, three was H. So we subtract thirty-two minus thirty-two minus three, which equals twenty-nine. And slash twenty, that would be our answer. Now, um, finding the max number of hosts, finding a mask that supports the max number of hosts is a little more difficult. So because we need to add network bits to subnet bits, which S is over here, which is four. So to find the network bits, examine the IP address and determine which class it resides in. So our address was one ninety-two, one sixty, that forty-four, that zero, which is class C. So class C addresses have twenty-four network bits. Uh, so anyway, class A network addresses have eight host bit or eight network bits. Class B has sixteen network bits, and finally, class C, or sorry, class B, I may have mispronounced that. Class B has sixteen no, network bits, and finally, class C has twenty-four network bits. So we add twenty-four to four, which was the answer we got back there, and then our mask is slash twenty-eight. So that's how we solve for maximum minimum hosts, uh, or maximum hosts and subsets. I know this is confusing. Um. I would say practice with the practice question, um, and use this guide to help you go through it. Um, if you practice enough, I will can tell you, you'll get good at it. Um, it took me a lot of practice, but I eventually got good and got really, I answered all, pretty much all these questions right on the final. So, and you can too. But anyway. Something that'll really help out here is this chart. It's the chart for powers of two. This is another thing I wrote down on paper. I wrote all these things that repeatedly. Um, throughout my time in this class, and I memorized all of it. So it's something I recommend you do. Like, just take a piece of paper, uh, write down all the powers of two up to to, to the power of ten. And then take this table back here, write down all the magic numbers in order, write down the interesting octet numbers like one twenty-eight, one ninety-two, twenty-two, twenty-four, and so on. If you write down these numbers, they will help you a lot. Also, you can write down the private address range, host range, that private IP address ranges, which we'll be going over eventually. But anyway, use this power of two chart, um, for memorization for these problems. Um, we're not done with something just yet, as we have some VLSM stuff to go through. So there's two types of VLSM problems you receive. Uh, one, we're asked you to provide the next three lowest subsets. And then the other one is adding a new subnet to an existing design. So to solve questions like this, where you're given a mask in a class four address space. Then you're asked to give the next three closest or next three lowest possible subsets in this range. What you do is you first find the magic number of the subnet. And so there's a specific pattern that I said, um, it starts in the first class list mask. Which um, for class B would be honestly here, we slash seventeen, I'm, I'm correct. Let me see, yes. So um, what you do is you count slash seventeen, slash eighteen, slash nineteen, slash twenty. Um, the numbers that correlate with that, so you can do slash seventeen, it's one twenty-eight, slash eighteen, sixty-four, slash nineteen, thirty-two. And this slash twenty sixteen, that's our magic number, because slash twenty, twenty is the mask we're given. Use the multiples of the magic number in there, it's for an interesting octave. You need to figure out the, what the interesting octave is. So if your address is class A, it's gonna be um, the second octave if it's class B. It's gonna be third octave, it's class C, it's gonna be the fourth octave. You can figure out the class by looking at the mask. So if it's between slash sixteen, slash twenty-three, which it is, class B, therefore, the magic number goes in the second octave. So, or sixteen with a magic number. So we begin writing down by um, putting one seventy-two to sixteen, that's sixteen, which is a magic number, that's zero. Then we add this number to itself, which is thirty-two. And then again, forty-eight. So that's basically how you solve this. It's basically multiplication after figure out the octave you need to put the number down. Man, doing that after you figure out what the magic number, magic number is. We can do this problem here too. So slash twenty-seven. We need to do the same thing, add three additional subsets. So the first thing we need to do is forget the magic number. So the magic number. Uh, let's see. So slash twenty-four is the first class full, or first class C mask. So slash twenty-five is gonna have one twenty-eight, slash twenty-six is gonna be sixty-four, slash twenty-seven is gonna be thirty-two. So then we need to figure out the interesting octave we need to put it in. That would be, um, so you gotta pay attention to the mask. You can't just go off of the IP address. You gotta go off the mask. Slash twenty-five, seven is a class C mask. Therefore, the fourth octave is where you put the, the um, magic numbers. So you first start with uh, one seventy-two, that sixteen, that thirty-two, that zero, then dot thirty, or sixty-four, that zero. And then one, then ninety dot ninety-six dot zero. Oh, I'm not dot zero, I'm sorry. It's the fourth octave. So you write down one seventy-two, that sixteen, that zero, that thirty-two. One seventy-two, that sixteen, that zero, that sixty-four, then one seventy-two, that sixteen, that zero, to ninety-six. Does this all make sense so far, Connor?
Yep.
Good, perfect. Sorry for the lack of clarity. I'm tripping all over myself. I'm sorry about that.
Uh, no problem.
Yeah, anyway, if you all find me kind of rambling, um, which you, some of you I'm sure might, um, I would say, um. My PowerPoint, that's what it's here for, review that. It's, it doesn't stumble and doesn't say, um, all the time like. It's, it tells it as it is. That's why I'm posting this PowerPoint once this session is done. You can find it in the final exam module. And um, I definitely think it'll be very good, a very good way to prepare for the exam. So second type of VLSM problem, adding new subsets to existing design. So you've had these problems before where you need to, um. Well, you won't see this, obviously, like this range thing here. I added that for demonstration. But basically, you'll be told that the following subset exists on the router. You want to add a new slash twenty-two subnet, and you need to add the lowest one possible. So my recommendation for solving these is to, um. Basically, you need to figure out the range of these masks, or or maybe some, some that, some that. So what you do is you figure out the broadcast ID. Of each um, subset right here. So magic number for size twenty-two would be, let's see here, that should be four. So you take four. And then subtract it from one. And then you add two fifty-five to the end if you have a zero. And then that's how you figure out the range. So basically, you, you're given the subnet ID. You just need to figure out the broadcast address. And what you do is you find the magic number, you subtract one from it, and then add two fifty-five to all zeros. And um, that's how you would, you would figure out the range here. So for example, with this one, one seventy-two, that sixteen, that sixteen, that zero, uh, slash twenty, the magic number is gonna be sixteen. So the broadcast address is gonna be thirty-one, that two fifty-five. So that's the range. Basically, the goal of this is to figure out what ranges are already taken, so you, you can find a subnet that's not gonna overlap with anything. So slash twenty-two's magic number, as we discussed, is four. So the next available subnet ID is four here, because this subnet ends on dot three, activity five. So the magic, so using the magic number method here, you have one seventy-two, sixteen, a four, that zero. Broadcast is gonna be seven, that two fifty-five. You see here, dot twelve is the next available, the next subnet in this list. So. One seventy-two, that sixteen, a four, that zero would be the next subset. Um, I will honest, I wish I did this before, but I actually have better slides that. More that give a better explanation of how to do this. I will update this PowerPoint with those slides, and you will have those to review. Um, but anyway, that's basically how you do it. You just find broadcast addresses. You figure out what the ranges of these subsets are. Use the magic number and um, do the same for here. If this range fits between this list, the lowest um, subnet ID that will fit into this list, you want to add that. And don't add the mask to your answer, just write it out like this, right up the subnet.
Uh, you got it.
Okay. Um, basically, um, all this, all this really is, is using the broadcast address or figuring out the broadcast address. To figure out the ranges of these addresses. Doing the same for this one here, find the lowest one that will fit. As I said, um, more detailed slides we put in after the session. Wildcard masks. So wildcard mask is basically, um. It basically defines portions of an IP address to be ignored by like an ACL or an OSPF router. Um, zeros are used for matching bits, one are for wildcard bits. If you look here, so these, so all the zeros basically mean in this list is that, um, whatever the subset is. Those numbers need to match. So say it's like one ninety-two, that one sixty-eight, that zero, that zero. And uh, if the first two octets were all zeros, that means one ninety-two, the one sixty-eight needs to be matched. Or karma ask you're using OSPF and ACLs, both of which, excuse me, both of which you'll need to know how to configure for the final. So um, you'll need to know how to calculate wildcard masks. Also, you'll be given wildcard mask, excuse me, questions in the exam, by the way. Excuse me. One tip here is that all zeros, when you see a zero. Oh, um, actually. Um, let me look here. I'm sorry about that. So when you see two fifty-five in your um, subnet mask, in your calculated wildcard masks. Um, two fifty-fives become zeros. That's because you basically subtract everything from two forty-fives. And basically, how you do that is, say you have this mask, two fifty-five, that two fifty-five, that two fifty-two, that zero, subtract it from, from a slash thirty-two. And then um, you can see here, two fifty-five, that minus, two fifty-five is gonna be zero. Two fifty-five minus two fifty-two is gonna be three, and then two fifty-five minus zero is two fifty-five. So yeah, as I said, some questions will simply ask you to calculate wildcard masks in the exam. Please be sure you can do it quickly. You should be able to after some practice. Unfortunately, there's no practice questions for these, but. Um, it's just subtracting the what, the mask from two fifty, uh, four octets to two fifty-five should be pretty simple. ACLs. Um, as I said, you'll need to know how to configure them for the exam. My command guide should be enough for that, and also the materials I have in that, that module. However, um, for the exam, all you really need to know is. What standard ACLs can do versus what extended ACLs can do. Keep in mind, um, when you answer the questions, there's some things both can do. That's very important to know. So standard ACLs, what can they do? They can filter based on source IP addresses. Extended ACLs can do that as well, but they can also do destination IP address too. Now, there's a number range right here. These two number ranges are different. Extended ACLs also have the ability to filter based on protocol important information. Standard ACLs do not. Standard ACLs can include individual hosts or source subnet with the wildcard mask. And extended ACLs can do this, and they can block either a host or an entire subnet. A major difference here, though, is that standard ACLs are placed as close to the destination as possible, because that prevents unwanted packet blocking. Extended ACLs are however, placed closest to the source as possible. So extended ones, you want to place as close to the source as possible. Standard ACL are placed as close to the destination as possible. So keep in mind, I'm actually going to highlight some similarities here, though. Highlighting green refers to similarities between, oops, well, actually, that'll work. So, um, let's see. So yeah, these will help you, um, keep in mind what the similarities are. That'll help you with the exam. There's overlap in the abilities between standard ACLs and extended ACLs. We can even, even color these differences red. That will help you all, um, that'll help you all with this matching question. There will be a matching question. That will require you to determine what this extended ACL can do, what a standard one can do. And um, there is an option that says both can do it, and whatever is highlighted green here, both can do. Whatever is highlighted in red is exclusive to that type of ACL. Anyway, so let's go ahead and do spanning tree protocol functionality. Let's go ahead and discuss it. So X, STP will be a topic that'll be included at the very back of the exam. There'll be free questions. I will warn you, they're worth a considerable amount of points, and they are pretty hard. So you want to make sure you understand this process to a T. And you can do so with these slides. I actually reused these slides from my STP module. Or vector that I created this semester, and hopefully that will increase your ability to do these. How do you feel on STP, Connor?
Um, I haven't had to work with it in a little bit, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so you configuring it, you will need to configure it in the GNS portion. But as far as the question exam, um, it really just comes down to knowing the process of how block ports are selected, root ports are selected, and also designated ports are selected. But anyway, the spanning tree protocol prevents loops, looping frames by sending certain switch ports to forward frames and others to block them. If you look here. In my um, diagram, these are block ports. By blocking these ports, we prevent um. Broadcast storms by frames just going through a loop. Block ports do not process incoming frames, do not learn MAC addresses, and they do not forward any frames. Let me put a do not there. And they do not forward any frames except for STP and RSTP messages. Port statuses are automatically updated when ports or devices are down. The one downside of STP is considerable decrease in performance. And um. Let's talk about how STP is configured. The process by which STP selects which ports are to disable is automatic, but can be influenced through manual configurations. Which we're not really concerned with for the question exam, but the process starts by electing what is known as the root switch. You're gonna need to know this for the final. This is the switch with the lowest BID or bridge ID, which is a combination between the switch's priority value and MAC address. The priority value is checked first. If they are the same between two switches, the MAC addresses are compared. So the bridge ID is going to be like the first five numbers. Let me put that here. There. Let me see, first five numbers of the ID. So the first five numbers of the BID are gonna be the priority value. You want to check those first. Whatever two have the lowest ones, you break that tie with the MAC address. So the MAC address needs to be the lowest one. So whatever MAC address is, whatever priority value is the lowest. Becomes the root switch. If there's a tie, whatever MAC address is the lowest becomes the root switch. So in the diagram to the right, IO one, IOU one would be the root switch. Note that it not only has the lowest priority, which is the first five numbers here, but also has the lowest MAC address, all of them starting with one. So MAC addresses are typically static, but switch priorities can be configured to influence which switch becomes the root one. So anyway, that, once you get, once you figure out what the root switch is, figuring out what ports to, what ports are designated, block the route, it becomes, it becomes much easier. But if you get this wrong, I will warn you, everything, you're very likely to get everything wrong. So please, please, make sure you know how to select the root switch is gonna be the most crucial part of this process. If you get that wrong, you get a lot of other things wrong. So after this election occurs, all the ports in the LAN are placed in one of the three states. Root port, the port on a switch that leads to the fastest path to the root switch. Each switch. Yeah, I'm sorry, this message, each switch only has one. There's only one root port on a switch. Designated port are designated, or determined per link between two switches. So the switch with the lowest cost to route. Between them is the designated port. So basically, whatever is not a root port. Um, you basically can, you take each link on a switch or between all the switches in the design. You compare them to one another, whichever one has the um, lowest cost to route. Becomes, it gets the designated port. The other port in this test basically becomes a block port. Port costs are determined by manual setting and default speed of port channel. This following table contains the fault port cost that will be very helpful in the final exam question, because I'm gonna STP. I cannot stress this enough. Um, you're not gonna see typical port values in the exam. You're gonna see these. You're gonna see like a gigabyte interface and then a regular interface. So fast ethernet interface is gonna be ten. MBS should probably highlight that, actually. Um, these are the two you're most likely going to see in the exam. We'll go and highlight them for you. Let's see, what color are we gonna add? Uh, we need to highlight them. Okay, highlight. These two highlight, these two highlighting yellow are likely what you're gonna be testing. So FA zero zero and GI zero zero. Note that the default port cost of a gigabit interface is four, fast ethernet interface is nineteen. Um, as I said, you're not going to see the port value numbers in this exam. Please be sure you memorize this fact. Unfortunately, when I did the exam, I was kind of confused by that, and um, yeah, I missed some points. So please, don't make my same mistake. Don't do as I did, and um, if you memorize that, that'll make this process a lot easier. Anyway. We will now go over a, an example of how STP determines root switches and port configurations. Each step will demonstrate, be demonstrated with the diagram below. So I created this diagram in GNS. I didn't configure anything on it, but you probably remember it from the STP module. But anyway, the first step in figuring out this process, when you're in the exam, you're given a topology, and you're asked to figure out what the root ports are. Very first thing you need to do is figure out what the root switches. Compare the switches, BIDs. Start with the switch priorities and, in the case of a tie, check the MAC address. Switch with the lowest priority, and then the lowest MAC address becomes root. The port, the, the priority must be checked first, and then the MAC address. Then whatever is lowest becomes the root switch. So IOU one is root in this case, so we can pair all the, yeah, the values, the switch values, um. So if you look between these four, it's the first five numbers in these, these um, BIDs. Four oh nine, four, four forty thousand nine hundred sixty. Um, that's not as low as three two thousand seven hundred sixty-eight. Therefore, these two would be root, these two are disqualified. Next, you check the MAC addresses. IOU one has the lowest MAC address. Check the first numbers here. Be sure you um, check the numbers carefully. Once you figure out what MAC address is the lowest, that will become your root switch. That's why IOU one here is root. So step two, determine the root ports, find the ports on the non-root switches that provide the fastest path to the root switch. This will typically be the port that's directly connected to the root switch, but not always. That's where those gigabit interfaces come into play. So um, they have a port cost, default port cost of four. And then the fast ethernet ports have a port cost of nineteen. You need to keep that in mind for the exam. Don't just make the, don't. Don't just make the, don't just assume that the direct connection is going to be root. So for example, I'm sorry, so don't, yeah. Okay. Did you have any questions?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. So as I was saying, don't just assume that the direct connection is going to be the root port. As I was saying, these port costs are very important. So the gigabit interfaces, gigabit interfaces have import cost of four. Fast ethernet interfaces have a forecast of nineteen. So in other words, if you have a topology, let's ignore this top all these uh, numbers for a minute. Let's say, um, for uh, IOU four. You had, um, this was a fast ethernet port right here. But between here, going to IOU two and then IOU two, IOU one, these are both gigabit interfaces. In that case, the port cause this, so you have to add for paths, you, excuse me, when you figure out the root port, the root ports. Need to calculate, um, which ones, need to calculate all the um. Switches that it goes to, so each switch that this port goes to, this frame goes to counts as a port cost. So for example, if these were gigabit interface, excuse me, gigabit interfaces. So this path would be four, because you're going across to a gigabit interface that's going to come. Increase your cost of four, then it's going to go to four again, be eight, a total of eight, because you had to go through two ports. Each with the cost of four. Now ether interfaces here, if you went to IOU three route, it's going to be nineteen plus nineteen, which is thirty six. If you just went straight towards, straight, straight to IOU one here, um, it's going to be nineteen. So which one's going to be faster? Which path would be the fastest one? Um, that would be the one to um, drive you to to IOU one. Um, because two gigabit interfaces put together, um, have a total port cost of eight. The direct connection here with just a fast ethernet port is just nineteen, or is nineteen, that's much more than eight. So that's why this path would be the fastest one. So here, yeah, the reports are. The direct connections, but just keep that example I gave you in mind when you work on the exam. So um, yeah, the direct connections here, these are just ether interfaces. They have a much higher port cost than this gigabit interface here. So therefore, yeah, these are going to be, the reports are going to be the direct connections to the root switch, which is IOU one. Next step, we need to determine what ports are going to be designated and which ones are going to be blocked. So um, all ports on root switches become designated. So that's a good first step. When you have the root switch here. They just make all those ports designated. That's all you need to do with that. That's some free points there, by the way. But anyway, all the ports, for all the other ports, you need to compare two switches connected by them, by these cables. So, for example, you compare. Um, the link between IOU two and IOU three. We're determining which port is designated and which one's blocked. You determine that um, by the lowest cost to the root switch. So I mean, you compare IOU two, IOU three, IOU two's um, port um, path to root. Is just a port cost of four, because of its uh, gigabit interface. IOU three, however, has a path that is um. And it's just a fast ethernet interface and that's going to be port, port cost nineteen. Because IOU two, IOU two's path to root is faster. Um, this port IOU two becomes root, or I'm sorry, designated.
Are you cut out?
Okay. Um, because IOU two has the faster path to root. Um, IOU two gets to designate around IOU three gets the block port. Now with IOU, the four versus IOU two. Uh, once again, IOU two has a faster path because of the gigabit interface versus the ether interface. Therefore, IOU two gets the designated port and IOU four is a block port. Now, when you're comparing two ports that have the same speed. Let's see here what I said here. See, uh, I three, I four. Oh, there's supposed to be a default poor cost number here. I'm sorry. I, it was missing here. Um, I need to find that. I'll need to put that back here, but let's just assume the path to IOU two is like eighteen. And this one is nineteen, the typical ethernet port. In that case, um, IOU fours is faster. I'm sorry, IOU two. I'm sorry, let me, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Um. Let's just assume that IOU three has a lower port cost than IOU fours root path. Therefore, it gets the designated port and IOU four does not. So um, there's supposed to be a number here. I'll have to add it later. I'm sorry about that. But anyway. That's how you determine all these ports, so. That's how you do STP for these exams. If you need a further explanation, I have another lecture on it. Did that, any of that make sense Connor? Does that help you understand STP?
Yeah, that that makes sense.
Good, excellent. Okay, we're at the home stretch here. Uh, network address translation, there is a question on it. Um, so basically, one thing you need to know is the private IP networks. The tend to do that, do that zero, that's a whole subset is the private network for class A. One seventy two to sixteen, I do to zero to one seventy two to thirty one, to two fifty five, to two fifty five, that is the private IP um, subset for class B. Finally, one ninety two, that one sixty eight, I do that zero, to one ninety two, that one sixty, that two fifty five, that two fifty five. That is the prior tire um, address range for the class C private IP network. Net terminology, this will be very important. Need to know the difference between the inside local, inside global, outside global and outside local addresses. So to understand what these terms mean, the first word is device referenced by the address. Let's say that um, we're configuring that through this interface. This is the inside network to the left of this circle. And then let's just say that this circle is some other company. So the inside local IP address is going to be the actual IP address assigned to a hope, host in the private IP enterprise network. Since our enterprises, say we have a um, a device back here, this is where the inside local IP address is going to be. Inside global address is going to be in that router. So the net router changes source, it's the source IP from inside local to inside global. Inside global addresses can be used for routing on the public network. That's routing on the internet. The name, the name is a little misleading. Even though it's called inside global, it's actually this interface outside of the private network. It's basically what the inside local address is translated to. Outside global, outside local, for the most part, are going to be the same thing. And they're basically, it's going to be the addresses here. So anyway, that's how that works. Um, that's how you will solve those problems. Um, then you, you need to understand the DORA process. DHCP has four steps. There's discover, offer, request and acknowledge. So I have the details down here. You can review in your own time. But anyway, um, so. These are the ports that DORA will use on each device. And they core the color core, they're color coordinated with each step to help you understand which device is doing what. Anyway, so the DHCP discover, or the first step is discover, where the DHCP client. Begins transmitting a message through the network seeking to find its DHCP server. The message received during the offer phase, the message is reached, the message reaches the DHCP server. This device then sends out a message to the client. This message contains an offer that is includes a leased address for that client can receive. After receiving the offer during the request phase, the client then accepts it, the address, and sends a message to the server requesting the offered address. The acknowledgement phase sees the um, client request received by DHCP server. And then that device sends the message to the client to give it the least. Give it the least IP address and the company information, such as the sub that mass, the default router's IP address. And networks DNS server's IP address and some other stuff. So anyway, that's how the process works. You have client, server, client, server. It's just communication between the client and server. Finally, IPv six address representation. This will help you determine or understand how IPv six addresses are um, created or how they're to abbreviate them. And I recommend picking the shortest answer you can with abbreviation. You basically just remove omitted, you just remove some. Groups of zeros that are together, you abbreviate them with just two colons. For example, with this IPv six address. You can um, abbreviate it two ways. You can abbreviate these two groups of zeros, this group of two zeros. Zero sets, I'm sorry, with two columns, or you can take these three and do the same with two columns. This is the preferred one. You want the shortest one possible. This however, is not valid. You cannot do two. You cannot do this process twice. You go do it once. So that's pretty much it. And that is the study session. Do you have any questions before we go, Brian? Or I'm sorry, Connor?
Uh, no, that that should have covered everything, I think.
Okay.
Um, probably just a quick thing. He says you're going to change the due date on the final labs.
Yes, if you're in the online section, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I said the final is going to change. Um. It actually isn't. I'm sorry, I thought the GNS, I have. Um, let me, um, yeah, let's let you all know, I'm not changing the file GNS labs. Let me stop recording now.